Oh, no, that's a good question for Patrick.
Somebody in the chat, yeah. There's our first person.
If we can.
We hold on the lobby for a minute.
Sure.
Um, he's doing both of them. Oh, I don't know. We do clear.
I'll be surprised. That's clean.
We proceed up to four days.
Algebra, yep, alphabetical.
First, like, didn't know much about the programs. My only exposure was through the clean water side. So I thought like, oh, yeah, this is the clean water SRF. I thought they're supposed to affect them. That I know.
Right.
Make sure they're eligible.
See, I was always thinking the drinking.
Well, yes.
I'll have our bias.
Say it again.
Berlin, yes.
Berlin, Waseby. What was meeting else?
Nope.
Oh, yeah.
They can fight.
The else. Off the air else. How's the project?
Oh.
Extending water. Yeah. Yeah, that's a little tricky because there's nothing. Right.
Water system nowhere.
The housing, yes, it wasn't sized, John.
We're not. Are we muted?
Good question.
Do they have ears?
Are we muted? No, I can't.
And me? The computer's muted, but the room can hear.
That one.
Arguably not. Water from nowhere. I guess people tend to join meetings like a minute. They start. I do. Teams meetings, right? You know, I'm trying to finish everything I'm doing. I'm like always too, you know, like.
Yeah, one or two.
Thirty-five seconds. Weird to join early. Sup, Lynette? Lynette is always, she starts, you start your meetings like five minutes early.
Yeah. I saw eight minutes the other day. I was like, wow.
I guess that can be like, basically my hurdles. Or like if eight minutes before the meeting and then it's 10 minutes after then.
Right. We're gonna wait till 1:01 and then we'll admit the audience.
Ah, very good.
Go. I think popcorn, you gotta wait till those last.
Yeah.
One of my lights go. All right, it's one o'clock. We get started. Can we let that folks sit in the lobby?
Yep, just a minute, everybody.
Know that. Maybe that's, that's a real lot. Mr. Bevetto. Yes.
Hello. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is the public meeting and public comment session for the 2024 draft Clean Water and Drinking Water SRF Intended Use Plans and Project Priority Lists. We have a handful of folks here in the room. If you're joining us remotely, if you would, please mute your speakers. My way of introduction, I'm Patrick Monk. I'm the Program Manager with the with the Water Infrastructure Finance Program. I'm joined by several of my coworkers. Our agenda for today. I'm working. One second. Agenda, starting at one o'clock now. We're gonna provide a presentation on the Clean Water Intended Use Plan and Project Priority List. Same for the drinking water side. And then we're gonna get an update from the Design and Construction Engineering Program. Got about 34 slides. So we're gonna try to pull through them quickly and take questions at the end. If there's, if I say something that's terribly unintelligible, feel free to flag it. But otherwise, we could save your questions until the end. It'll give us a better chance of getting through them all. And then, starting at two o'clock, we will take any formal public comments that folks would like to make today. If we don't have time to get through all the sort of informal questions during, during this first period, one to two, once we've gotten through the public comments, we can always loop back and we'll all be here at least until three o'clock. And happy to discuss any questions you have. Apologize, at least for those sitting in the room, for sitting down during a presentation I was describing earlier. I don't have the right distance glasses today, so I can read close. And I can't stand and see the screen, so I'll be sitting. All right, the timeline for the Intended Use Plans. Public comment deadline is July 31st. You can, if you would, email them to me at patrick-monk@vermont.gov. My email's also on the public notice that went out. You can also provide public comment today during the public comment session at two. The final intended use plans, including responses to all public comments received during the period, hopefully by mid-August. That's our goal. Certainly depends on what we receive for public comment and any adjustments that are needed in the final IUP or priority lists. And then, following adoption of the Intended Use Plan for projects applying for construction funding, we plan to send out funds availability letters one week final, following adoption of the IUP. Some big picture program updates. We are continuing funding under the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law of 2021, also known as Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. That created five new EPA SRF grants. We used to receive one grant for Clean Water and one for Drinking Water. We now receive three for Clean Water and four for Drinking Water. That has increased funding, has also increased the number of requirements and the accounting complexity of our programs. Currently, in year three of five, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law funding will continue through 2026. Federal fiscal 26, we're in federal. This is the federal fiscal 24 IUP. That's, that's out on draft right now. Congressional directed spending, also called CDS, are earmarks, continues to affect our program. And effective results in a reduction in our SRF base grant. This grant is referred to as the general grant and intended use plans. In short, the way it works is Congress makes an allocation for the SRF program nationally. And then, all the CDS or SRF eligible projects are deducted from that. And then, the remaining resulting sum is then allocated to the states using a formula. Vermont is a 1% state on the drinking water side and a half a percent state on the clean water side. So, you know, other states, say California, might get a whole bunch of money that will come out of the national allocation, which will reduce what we receive for a base grant. That obviously affects what we have for funding. It reduces the amount of subsidy or loan forgiveness we have, especially for projects that don't meet affordability criteria or are not a disadvantaged community. It also has a big impact on our drinking water groundwater protection division because it reduces the set-asides, which help fund their programs and programs they provide to Vermonters. Set-asides being essentially a percentage of the base grants that come into us that go to the drinking water division. Looking ahead, we've been working on a new online application system that will replace A&R Online for all SRF submittals, loan applications, engineering service agreements, loan reimbursement requests, anything you currently send to us will be through that new system. It's also will be integrated with a new database that will allow for better tracking of the status of projects. It's also, it's also gonna be covering all grants that the department works on. That's expected to deploy it late this year, might drift into early 2025. You know, it'll certainly be a change. Think it'll be good, but it's gonna be a big change for our public. So we were, we are anticipating a good deal of outreach and training to get everybody signed up and on board. Also, big picture, the IUPs, both, on both sides are really consistent with 2023 and 22 as well. We're making an effort to, you know, keep the program offering similar from year to year. There are some, some changes, certainly dollar amounts change. Couple notable changes. We are proposing a reduction in the maximum annual administrative fee for manufactured home communities. Currently, 2.75%, down to 1.5%. That's based on public comment received in last year's IUP and also ongoing input from that, that sector over the past year or so. And on the clean water side, we are proposing to reinstate the floodplain buyout and restoration subsidy program. Did not have that lot, we had it two years ago and prior to that, I believe. We didn't have it last year because there was other funding available, so it wasn't necessary. But that other funding has run out, as far as I know, or as I understand it. All right, so that's it for just sort of big picture program overview. Jump into the Clean Water IUP. There's a lot to the IUPs, if you've ever read one. You know, they're 35 pages, really focusing on some of the aspects that I think are the most fundamental. Certainly, this is by no means a summary of all the elements of the IUP. So if anyone's interested, we encourage you to read them and to provide comment. Funding sources for this year, the first line covers the capitalization grants. Those are the grants we receive from each EPA each year. The general grant, the first column is our base grant. General supplemental and emerging contaminants. Those funds are combined with any state match that's required, none is required for emerging contaminants. And we have repayment monies, interest and carry forward, carry forward funds being from prior years. Total, as shown, what it translates into for general, general supplemental, emerging contaminants, all combined. We have 118, 119 million dollars available for loans. We currently have a total funding request of 203 million, leaving a funding shortfall of 84 change. In order to prioritize funding for projects seeking construction funding, projects are ranked, projects submit a priority list application and then those applications are scored using criteria and environmental protection rule, chapter two. Used to regulate the priority list application ranking and then assigns points based on nine categories, including public health, water quality, affordability and project readiness. That's not all of them, that's just a handful. The priority ranking points are also used for calculating pollution control grant eligibility percentage. Once those, once all the applications are scored, it results in the project priority list and the priority list identifies which projects are in the fundable range. Next slide covers the amount of subsidy available. By subsidy, we mean principal forgiveness, also referred to as additional subsidy. Each of the grants stipulates how much of that grant can or needs to be used or needs to be provided for in the form of subsidy. General grant, we have 40,800 available with no restrictions, meaning recipients do not, don't need to meet affordability criteria. Others, an additional 1.2 million for projects that do meet affordability criteria. That's what the AC refers to over on the third column. Or it needs to be a sustainable project as defined by section 603 I of the Clean Water Act. General supplemental, 49% of that grant needs to be made available in the form of subsidy. And that works out to 5.4 million. It's restricted to projects that meet affordability criteria. And emerging contaminants, 100% of the grant needs to be made available as subsidy and there are no restrictions. So, the grant stipulate how much subsidy we can use. We do take the maximum allowable amount under each of the grants where it's arranged. But then, the IUP identifies how we, which, which programs we intend to or how we intend to use that subsidy. Under the general, general supplemental grants, we have proposing subsidy for planning, continuing the Lake Champlain TMDL affordability program, flood restoration, floodplain restoration and buyout, construction subsidy and emerging contaminants, it's all eligible activities. I'll get into a bit more detail on these. For planning subsidy and clean water, again, this is very similar to last year. We're, we're offering 50% subsidy up to $100,000 on all preliminary engineering and final design projects with a maximum of 250,000 per borrower. Category two planning is 100% subsidy with a maximum of 125 per borrower. We, the IUP identifies seven specific categories of projects that are eligible for category two planning, including CSOs, private resilience projects, cybersecurity, several others. And we also have category three planning for emerging contaminants. That's 100% subsidy for up to 150,000 per project. We're in the, this fourth year, I believe, the Lake Champlain TMDL affordability program. To qualify, municipality needs to meet the limits set by wastewater permit under the 2016 Lake Champlain TMDL. Project needs to have post-construction user rates that exceed 4% of median household income. And the program provides $500,000 loan forgiveness for up to four sequential years, up to a total of $2 million. As noted, we are reinstating the floodplain restoration subsidy program. It provides up to 250,000 per project. The amount and the percentage of loan forgiveness depends on whether the project is eligible for FEMA funding and also whether it's in a manufactured housing community. Couple different, there's two different categories of projects. For construction subsidy on the clean water side, under the general, general supplemental grants, 50% subsidy up to 750,000 per project, for projects that meet affordability criteria. Emerging contaminants, it's 100% forgiveness up to $1 million per project. Any project that's eligible for funding under the merchant contaminants grant is eligible for subsidy. On the clean water side, to qualify for subsidy, projects need to be, have a municipal borrower. Subsidy is considered reserved for a project upon receipt of funding application, completion of qualifications-based selection process. A draft engineering service agreement needs to be submitted. Project needs to meet readiness to proceed criteria. Those criteria are identified in the IUP. Got a typo on the last bullet there, but additional subsidy is not guaranteed until loan approval and issuance of an authorized letter of funding. We are also continuing to provide funding for natural infrastructure projects, including traditional SRF loans for conservation and restoration projects. We are also continuing interim finance with a $2 million put aside. And also continuing the Farmland Futures Fund, which provides funding for conservation, water quality enhancements on projects that are, I mean, on farms that are procured by the Vermont Land Trust to assist with intergenerational farm transfer. Yeah, our, the IUP identifies continuing whisper. As far as the Water Infrastructure Sponsorship Program, it's been pretty quiet the last few years due to a range of factors, including staffing. But we have staffed up Catherine King, Basin Program has, has taken lead on that program. I recently had a loan to Shelburne that included a whisper element. Do a lot more in the future. Way the whisper program works is a traditional municipal, we want a SRF project sponsors a natural resource project. And that borrower is able to essentially borrow an additional 10% of the loan value towards a natural resource project. But a straight of fee for that project is lowered to the point such that the repayment amount is the same as if they didn't engage in that whisper natural resource project. Additionally, projects receive an additional 0.1% straight of fee reduction. So, yeah, we're, we're feeling really fortunate to have that program really fully staffed and up and running. Looking ahead to next year, this is sort of a, an initial heads up and we'll be reaching out next year around the time or even earlier that we start soliciting priority list applications to announce that we are gonna have additional stormwater funding for MS4 communities. MS4 communities are a group of roughly a dozen larger municipalities in and around the Burlington area and also St. Albans and Rutland that are subject to the MS4 Municipal Separate Storm Sewer General Permit. And this funding will help, designed to help implement phosphorus control plan and flow restoration plans, which are requirements under the MS4 General Permit. We will have $3 million available under the next IUP. To be eligible, projects will need to submit priority list applications. And that funding may be in the form of subsidy under an SRF loan. We are proposing or anticipating that projects will need to provide a 25% match. All right, that in a nutshell is Clean Water, S IUP. I'm gonna move on to the drinking water IUP. And apologize for going fast, but I'm hoping to preserve some time for some questions and answers at the end. So just like with the Clean Water IUP, our funding sources consist of the, in this one. In the case of drinking water, there's upwards of four grants, general, general supplemental, lead service line and emerging contaminants. There's an NA under lead service lines this year because we are not applying for that grant because we have a surplus of funding from prior. We need to identify that we have projects that are creating a demand for the grant funds before we can apply to it. And then, we have state match, repayments, interest and carry forward. And resulting in the totals as shown on the bottom line, which again translates into, for everything but the lead, for general, general supplemental and emerging contaminants, we have 47.4 million available for loans. We have a total funding request of 127 million. We've definitely seen, you know, significant increases in demand on the drinking water side. This past year, you know, was record or near record number of loans and dollar amount of loans. So things are continuing to be, you know, strong demand on the Clean Water, on both sides, but certainly on drinking water. That results in a funding shortfall of $80 million. Lead, on the other hand, we've got 31 million available loans, sorry, in funds and total funding request of just over 1.3 million. You know, the lack of identified demand on the lead service line part is due in part to the, the units are still in the service line inventory phase. So the first step in removing, identifying and removing any lead service lines is to, you know, is to complete the inventory to determine if there are any and where they are. That we currently have a, you know, $30 million surplus on lead service line, so there's no funding line on the, on that project priority list. To, you know, for the other priority lists, general emerging contaminants, we do have funding lines. So projects are ranked, they're ranked using Guidance Document Two. And Guidance Document Two calculates priority points based on six ranking categories. This is just three of them, but including the number of service connections, the affordability and service area and identified deficiencies and compliance issues. This table covers the amount of subsidy available under the three grants. We do have carry forward subsidy on the left side from prior years. But for this year's grant, on the general side, we have 652,540 available and additional subsidy without restrictions. Sometimes we call that add sub anyone. If you've been following IUPs over the last several years, you'll note that that's quite a bit lower than it had been prior to the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law and the reinstatement of CDS. It's 1.6 million available for disadvantaged communities. General supplemental, there's 11.2 million available for disadvantaged communities. And emerging contaminants, we have 6.8 million available. At least 25% of that subsidy needs to go to disadvantaged systems, disadvantaged communities or systems serving less than 25,000 persons. Because the overwhelming ponderance of our systems are less than 25,000. We have no problem meeting that, so there's really not much in the way of any restrictions on, on who's eligible for that subsidy. This table identifies the initiatives that we're proposing for the subsidy. Again, it's very similar to last year. We have general grant, we have planning, planning subsidy. We're getting 500,000 towards source protection loans. Construction subsidy, general supplemental, also construction subsidy. Lead service line, it's really, it's for both planning and construction. It is restricted for disadvantaged communities, which are defined a little differently for purposes of lead service line grant. And under emerging contaminants, we have $480,000 available on planning subsidy and the remainder, 6.8 million available for construction. In terms of the specifics for the subsidy programs, under general and general supplemental, offering, proposing 25% loan forgiveness up to $70,000 on all preliminary engineering and final design loans. Lead service line planning and design, it's 100% forgiveness up to $100,000 and 50% over 100,000, and that's for disadvantaged communities. And for emerging contaminants, it's 100% forgiveness. For construction subsidy, general, general supplemental, it's for disadvantaged communities, up to 50% forgiveness. Lead service lines, same, up to 50% forgiveness. And for merchant contaminants, we have some project specific caps. Few but large projects on the merchant contaminants priority list, so that results in some, the need to, some funding caps. And merchant contaminant subsidy, again, as a, as a part of the grant requirement is 100% subsidy. The IUP identifies readiness to proceed criteria for projects that are above the funding line and do receive a funds availability notice. You pay what you want to, as always, pay close attention to these dates. Projects are required on the clean water side to submit a step two loan application by November 1st. Submit a complete environmental information document by December 1st. And submit 90% design drawings to drinking water groundwater protection division or a construction permit by January 1st. On boat scheduled, both programs by January 31st of 2025. Over debt authorization by May 1st and finally submitting a complete funding application by June 30th, 2025. All right, so that speed was through IUPs before I move into construction and engineering.
The date looks incorrect. Patrick, just wanted to clarify.
2024 on December 1st. Thank you. Yes. All right, so next up, well, that's gonna give us an update on Design and Construction Engineering Program and then we can move into questions.
Thanks, Patrick. I'm Lynette Plon with the Clean Water Sam Revolving Fund, Design Engineering Group of the Design and Construction Engineering Section. So we have a couple reminders first on the design side. These are very similar to last year. First, that we are requesting that your loan deliverables, middles come through the inner document, the middle drop off portal. Secondly, that you have a Clean Water Product Priority Points Meeting as you're finishing your planning effort to make sure that all of the points are properly documented in your P R and that there's a good understanding of the points that each project has earned going into, you know, as you're finishing up that planning effort. And lastly, a reminder that the draft engineering services agreements are now collected through A&R Online. We have some work that's in progress. We have been working on the new submittal portal, as Patrick mentioned. So all those middles that we were just talking about just now will be collected through, through the new submittal portal. Next, we are still working on the floodplain executive order guidance document number 37 of the internal coordination, also hasn't been completed yet. Order guidance document number thirty seven of the internal coordination has also been completed yet. Um and then um. A reminder again this year that um. The engineering services agreements um from E J C D C need to include all the federal requirements. Um. We did include this reminder last year. We are working on a new guidance document number thirty nine to help with that clarification. And to make sure that we're on board with R D and their edits as well. Um and then. Lastly, uh we're still working on clarifying our shipo procedures. We do have a new form for the section one oh six consultation that's up on our website. Um that consultants can fill in to save a little bit of time after. We still need to be the conduit um for the shipos the middle. Uh so that, that form can get filled out and then sent on to us with the ground materials. Um so that we can then agree with you and forward it on to the shipo office. Um going to be doing some updates also for the construction engineering section. Again, this should look the same basically as last year. Yes, please. Um it looked the same as last year, but with the um impact that we've lost a couple of staff, we're not always. That currently um we're down two, so because of these limitations, um please um be gentle with us. Um BABA is now required under this federal capitalization grant. Um the BABA waiver that was. Available for the adjustment period did get updated and so. Starting with this federal capitalization grant, we are not able to um have any new waivers. Um. Not sure how much we're spending down still on the old capitalization grants, so please do have those conversations with your design engineer and the palm. So that um. Or any, as the case may be, um so that you know which monies you're getting for your project um as you're. Going to finish up your um contract documents. Um. Another reminder that um we are formally accepting the two thousand eighteen E J C D C essays. Another reminder to make sure that they're updated with the federal. Requirements and um. Also, we have a bill signage requirement, which um. Is not new, but maybe you haven't had a bill sign have to go up yet on your project. Uh the bill sign does have to be separate than the E P A sign. Um although you can combine your Vermont clean water sign with your E P A sign, but you cannot change the bill sign. Then lastly.
We haven't talked about. We didn't make this one up. This is a federal thing.
Yeah. Lastly, there is a reminder to use the current standard form one four 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 D B A classifications request. And um to just always check our website to make sure that you're using most up to date forms. Excellent. Um lastly, D C E runs two very small grant programs compared to the overall S R F program funding. So one is the overflow sewer grant. We're using the project priority list. Um funding to also select who receives that grant. Um so that is a very small federal grant for combined sewer overflow payment projects with preference for. Refinements for rural and financially disadvantaged communities. With green stormwater infrastructure if available and green project reserve project elements. We anticipate one word, it is very small. Next with the village ARPA grants. Um these were grants established several years ago for the village wastewater projects. For untoward villages and the with village center designations um for eligibility. Uh we remind you to look at guidance document thirty eight. And um. An update on the trickle down funding, so. Communities receiving funds were de-obligated from state fiscal year twenty four have already been notified. So we have one new community on the ARPA village list and that's Watesfield. Um and other communities have had uh redistribution of those S F Y twenty four funds. We do anticipate some additional de- obligation that will happen in S F Y twenty five, but we only have until September. To basically finish all of that up, so all that will be happening very quickly and we anticipate it only for design and construction activities.
Alright, great. Thank you, Lana. But we have, alright, so it's, it's one thirty. Um. So. Starting at two, we'll start accepting public comments, so um from now until two, we're happy to take any. Any questions uh that you have on presentation, you know, the draft I U Ps. Projects, whatever's on your mind. Um. So do we have anyone on the phone?
We do not.
You do not? That makes it easier. Alright, so. In this order, um we have any in-person questions in it? Either way, if our guests here would uh. Please, I had to mention earlier, if you wouldn't mind signing in at some point, so on. Um anyone here have any questions?
Alright, Wayne. Uh just made Wayne Elliott, quick comment about the E J C D C documents. Just wondering if you guys have any internal discussions. As you know, we've had several communities and clients are now doing their own review of the uh. Documents with their legal um and the turns. Which has created some significant challenges, the comments, and you just probably have a dozen of these larger communities, uh comments vary by community. Um processing has been pretty slow, so. Probably needs to be some kind of consistent positioning from W I D on what's allowed and. What's acceptable, because. That's, and unfortunately, the consultants are put in the middle of that because it's not, you know. It, it doesn't necessarily matter to us which way we go, but we're kind of in the middle of the whole thing and. As where in some cases, this has taken probably four, five months and even more to kind of work through, so. It's something that should be on your, where you are moving forward.
Okay.
You noted, alright. Alright. Thanks Wayne. Any other comments in the room? As I should say. I was looking at my screen and it was doing the transcript. I was like, wow, someone's putting in a lot of comments in the chat, but. Get to look at the chat. Alright, um. Alright, so no other questions in the room at the moment. Um. Anyone online? Um have a question? No. Who? Just, actually, we'll go with raised hands first. Um. You want?
That's a, a chat conversation.
Get there in a sec.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, I saw a hand for a second. O'Connor?
Yeah, sorry, I, that was a mistake. I was going to look at the chat and press the wrong button.
Oh, hey Claire, I just saw.
Hi.
Your name's, your, your name is truncated on my screen here. Uh. Okay, um question in the chat.
From Laura Clemens. Will the slide presentation be made available after the meeting?
Um I did not mention that, might have been earlier in the. Chat, but yes, we will. Um the meeting's been recorded, we'll uh provide a, you know, copy of both the meeting and the, and the uh. The slide presentation will be made available on our website. Um you know, if you want uh any sort of direct notification of that, please just drop your contact information. Uh in the chat, or we will um. You'll be putting it out on the uh same webpage where we have the draft I U Ps posted. Alright, so we have any other? Questions? Apparently not, so um yeah, the public comment period does start at two, so we'll take. Um a little break. Folks are welcome to stick around until then. To keep the meeting recording going. And. Beat the mic for the room. Um. I guess I'll just keep it going, I'll just keep it rolling. So yeah, if you're curious to. Hear what others have to say, or if you want to provide comments, we'll do that at two o'clock, so. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you. We can have a question for you, sure.
But maybe just. I guess we don't need to transcribe all the muttering, so I did pause. Megan, I'm gonna pause the microphone uh in the room, just so we don't transcribe a bunch of other.
Sure.
Yeah.
You need to stop.
Yeah. I don't think so. I think it's just, you know, if someone wanted to comment, then you know, it's like, you know. It's what we do in meetings.
So is this muted now?
Yeah.
Does it work? Carry forward. Drinking, so I will be paying with money.
Show us my money.
We do, John.
That's what the book.
We got it, yeah, it's, it's basically the way we.
Okay. Yeah. It's only nineteen people.
Yeah. That's why. Yeah, no, it is, and it's quite a. Long one for online and uh, you know, we did, went beyond, beyond.
Usually a few more people than that.
Yeah, right?
Okay.
I think everybody's really busy.
Had available funds from all of this time.
Something like.
Yeah.
Level. Right, so that's, it's, it's. Theoretically, that's right, but they're all, but they're all real long, right?
Yep. That's what the council were.
People are gonna work ourselves out of jobs, you know.
Um Neil was texting during this. Anyway, during the meeting about rebuilding the.
Um. Well, either Sean.
He said, somebody just said the. Room meeting, my guest is.
You know. It was.
You
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 You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You You Hello, welcome back. So we completed our public meeting on the draft intended use plans for clean water drinking water. And now, starting at 2 o'clock, I guess we're a minute ahead of time, in a minute, we'll start with. Public comment session for anyone who wants to provide comment on either of the intended use plans. This will be an opportunity to do so, as mentioned on the slide. And as mentioned earlier, those can also be accepted by email to me. At Patrick dot monks at Vermont dot gov. If you do provide verbal comments today, and you also intend to submit written comments, if you could let us know if there's. That, if they're essentially the same, you know, saves us a lot of transcription effort. So what we'll follow the same order as we did with questions during the meeting. Start with any public comments from anyone in the room. Yes, Wayne.
Yeah, we're gonna submit in writing of just a heads up order, trying to schedule a meeting for the shelter wastewater project. To go through the priority points in the ranking on that, they are. In preparation for November bond goes, so we're trying to get that typed up and make sure we've got some degrees certain there. Getting with people, so hopefully that happens soon. Also, this will be, well, that's in the loop on this one, but, you know, if possible, would like to add ten of plainfield to the list from the flood damage. They lost the siphon across the brook where they, the great brook. Have temporary pumping set up there, and they lost a good portion of the outfall from the treatment plan. And then on the drinking water side, we'll submit something in writing, I've been working with Amy on. Richford, the golf course road, they did qualify last year for the disadvantaged subsidy. Trying to get some updated numbers, they did have a pass a bond though, kind of assumed that they were qualifying or receiving 50% subsidy. So we're hoping we can work through that and get them back to the. The thirty year loan and the zero percent plus the disadvantaged subsidies. And then again, on plainfield. Also gonna be submitting a request for them to add to the P list for flood damage, they lost the existing water line, again, a great broken, another crossing, so they're gonna require some private repairs there.
Anything else? Okay, noted, thank you, Wayne. Yeah, just as a general response, any projects where they're concerned about either the, you know, the. Scoring or the preliminary loan terms, amount of subsidy, you know, do, do check your prior to established application. And, you know, as soon as possible, and, you know, provide us any updated information on that application, any corrections that are needed. Any other comments in the room? Okay. Next. Anyone, anyone attending online that would like to provide comment? We'll start with raised hands, or folks who are attending, and we'll move on to chat. Okay, great, yes, thank you, Pete. Go ahead, Pete, you're muted. I'll try the chat.
Okay, I'm sorry. It took me, it took me a second to find the, to find the icon. I apologize for the delay.
Not at all.
I'm Pete, I'm Pete Benevento, I'm with the Lake Carmine Campus Association and the Franklin Watershed Committee, and. I've been involved in water quality efforts at Lake Carmine. For the past twenty years. As most of you may know, we have suffered a. Blue-green algae problem for, for years, to the point where the, the lake is unusable and, and unhealthy. And, and just to give you a little background. We've, years ago, we were designated a, a, a lake in crisis. It's been decades that we've been designated a lake in crisis and that we've been a eutrophic lake. In two thousand nine, we were awarded a TMDL. From EPA, and in twenty eighteen, we were legislatively, legislatively designated a lake in crisis, so. We've, we've had a long, hard road to travel to get to our point today. Where the town of Franklin has just submitted a letter this morning requesting to be placed on the project priority list. Of the intended use plan for a step three implementation of a Lake Carmine alum treatment. And we, we never thought we would get to this point today, we are just ecstatic that we are here. And that we have hope that we can have a treatment done to the lake. That will make the lake usable and healthy for years to come. So I just want to urge your, your favorable consideration of, of the letter that was submitted by the town of Franklin this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, noted, we did receive that, thank you. And again, we will be providing responses to all comments received today and in writing as part of the final intended use plans. All right, anybody else have a comment? Don't see any other hands. Any comments in the chat? Definitely prefer them by email or spoken, but if someone wants to provide comment in the chat, we can accommodate that as well. I think everything that I'm seeing was questions earlier on. Comment period started at two, and we had just had that one question confirming EJ CDC. Are there any other comments? I see Pete's hand still raised, but I trust that's from prior, that's fine. All right. Well, it's only two oh seven.
Hello, welcome back. We completed our public meeting on the draft intended use plans for drinking water. And now, starting at 2:00, I guess we're a minute ahead of time. In a minute, we'll start with public comment session for anyone who wants to provide comment on either of the intended use plans. This will be an opportunity to do so, as mentioned on the slide. And as mentioned earlier, those can also be accepted by email to me at Patrick.Monks@Vermont.gov. If you do provide verbal comments today and you also intend to submit written comments, if you could let us know if there's that, if they're essentially the same, it saves us a lot of transcription effort. So we'll follow the same order as we did with questions during the meeting. Start with any public comments from anyone in the room. Yes, Wayne?
Yeah, we're going to submit in writing just a heads up order trying to schedule a review meeting for the shelter wastewater project to go through the priority points in the ranking on that. They are in preparation for November bond goes, so we're trying to get that typed up and make sure we've got some degrees there. So hopefully that happens soon. Also, this will be, well, that's in the loop on this one, but you know, if possible, would like to add ton of plain field to the list from the flood damage. They lost the siphon across the brook where they, the great brook, had temporary pumping set up there and they lost a good portion of the outfall from the treatment plan. And then on the drinking water side, we'll submit something in writing. I've been working with Amy on Richford, the golf course road. They did qualify last year for the disadvantaged subsidy, trying to get some updated numbers. They did have a pass of bond though, kind of assumed that they were qualifying or receiving 50% subsidy. So we're hoping we can work through that and get them back to the 30-year loan and that 0% plus the disadvantaged subsidies. And then again, on plain field, also going to be submitting a request for them to add to the P-list for flood damage. They lost the existing water line, they get a great broken and another crossing, so they're going to require some private repairs there.
Anything else? Okay, noted. Thank you, Wayne. Yeah, just as a general response, any projects where they're concerned about either the, you know, the scoring or the preliminary loan terms amount of subsidy, you know, do check your priority status application and, you know, as soon as possible and provide us any updated information on that application, any corrections that are needed. Any other comments in the room? Okay. Next, anyone, anyone attending online that would like to provide comment? We'll start with raised hands for folks who are attending, and we'll move on to chat. Okay, great. Yes, thank you, Pete. Go ahead, Pete. You're muted. I'll try the chat.
Okay, I'm sorry. It took me, it took me a second to find the, to find the icon. I apologize for the delay.
Not at all.
I'm Pete, I'm Pete Benevento. I'm with the Lake Carmine Campus Association and the Franklin Watershed Committee, and I've been involved in water quality efforts at Lake Carmine for the past 20 years. As most of you may know, we have suffered a blue-green algae problem for years, to the point where the lake is unusable and unhealthy. And just to give you a little background, we've, years ago, we were designated a lake in crisis. It's been decades that we've been designated a lake in crisis and that we've been a eutrophic lake. In 2009, we were awarded a TMDL from EPA, and in 2018, we were legislatively designated a lake in crisis. So we've, we've had a long, hard road to travel to get to our point today, where the town of Franklin has just submitted a letter this morning requesting to be placed on the project priority list of the intended use plan for a step three implementation of a Lake Carmine alum treatment. And we, we never thought we would get to this point today. We are just ecstatic that we are here and that we have hope that we can have a treatment done to the lake that will make the lake usable and healthy for years to come. So I just want to urge your favorable consideration of the letter that was submitted by the town of Franklin this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, noted. We did receive that. Thank you. And again, we will be providing responses to all comments received today and in writing as part of the final intended use plans. All right, anybody else have a comment? Don't see any other hands. Any comments in the chat? Definitely prefer them by email or spoken, but if someone wants to provide comment in the chat, we can accommodate that as well. I think everything that I'm seeing was questions earlier on. Comment period started at 2:00, and we had just had that one question confirming EJ CDC. Are there any other comments? I see Pete's hand still raised, but I trust that's from prior, that's fine. All right. Well, it's only 2:07. So I'll plan to stick around and monitor just in case someone happens to show up. Folks are welcome to stay, but no offense taken if anyone wants to, wants to leave. Yeah, I mean, thank you all for attending, presenting. Feel free to at amongst yourselves, and we'll just keep an eye on the, eye on the, on the chat in case anyone happens to join us. Again, I might go back upstairs and tend to a couple matters. Understandably. It's recorded, but. Yeah, I'm going to, that, I'm going to, I'm just letting folks know, we're going to, again, mute just to save the transcription. We will be here. Thank you.[1720.13]
I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
But if you provide the audio content, I'd be happy to help you with that.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Well, it's just before three, um looking like we're not gonna get any more comments so we're gonna close the meeting. Uh thanks for attending.